We order at seven o'clock.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, adoption or amendment of agenda. We have a couple items. Under correspondence for adding food, the Blue Water Area Robotics Grant Opening Invitation. And then, under new fitness, we're going to add the Superintendent Evaluation Tool selection.
I'll make a motion to adopt Trump's agenda as amended.
Motion by Mrs. McKeen, supported by Mrs. O'Connor. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye, and opposed. Motion carried. Page five of the consent agenda.
Okay, under the consent agenda this evening, we're approving the minutes from the regular meeting and closed session meeting of August 26, 2019 as presented. We're also approving general fund bills in the amount of $184,143.48, and AP payroll checks in the amount of $7,603.1 for a total of $191,746.49, with checks numbered 64356 through 64443, and ACH transfers in the amount of $180,635.95, for a total of $372,382.44, with checks numbered 64288 and 64399 voided, and additional bills in the amount of $248,498.39, with checks numbered 64444 through 64462, and no checks avoided, as well as, under personnel, the hiring of Emily Landon, Lauren Schmidt, and Kayla Coulter as daycare providers. Denise Jason is a playground aide, Ashlyn Manino is a sub aide, Jason Phillips is a sub bus driver, Kimberly Gittari is a high school special education teacher, and changes in assignment Susan Moner from sub bus driver to regular driver, and Anne Marie Kaltier from playground aide to parrot girl.
Motion by Mr. Cuck, supported by Mr. Cari. All those in favor say aye, opposed. Motion carried. And we're on to reports.
Hi, everybody, how you doing? Soccer is going outside. Of course, we won nothing right now, but it could last Wednesday. Our team is right now tied to first with Marlette, and basically, the tournament took place on Wednesday night, but we win that. The season won't be over, but there were a couple teams that fell out of our league. It's ETB right now, so, riding around, seeing people out this year, so, our, our, Marlette tied 2-2 beginning of the year, so, we had a chance to not, to be pretty excited on Wednesday night. I know the kids are really excited. Cross-country, if you follow that at all, we've been some nice reports, that Mrs. O'Connor sent us some nice reports the other day, we're able to get it out, and Carlson, brother, sister, couple, they both have school records, they're both ranked in county, they're each other contender, so, and as a team, we're ranking the competition, we've got some fantastic finishes, and we're expecting great things from them, we're expecting them to back to states this year, so, that color, it started too quickly, but I know Lori's really excited, working hard, hard with them. I wanted to touch on the junior high football, varsity football thing, but the first thing I wanted to go with that is Brad had sent me, about three, four weeks ago, a thinking about concussion protocol at Reese, and I set up some coaches, actually, three coaches that, I figured we would try to make it, and I went to that, and thanks to them, I will tell you that I walked away from there, it was more, turned out to be more for parents to go to, for information, not so much, I mean, not that the coaches can't, but I can tell you that I think we're very well versed as a school, in how we are handling concussion protocols, something like that, the kids that are hurt, calling up the doctors and stuff like that, so, I didn't really walk away with more information, but I did walk away knowing that I'm still pretty comfortable that I'm working, it's really good, and if you remember, I think it was a year, maybe two years ago, we adapted the board, the concussion protocol, we guys reported it, and that's over and above what the doctors said, so basically, follows along Ryan, you know, if our coach sees something's going on, that maybe the doctor, that's sort of a myth, they said, okay, junior, can you go play now? And our coach knows he's a little lethargic, and things aren't moving so well, we kind of followed that, methods concussion protocol, that's over and above, a lot of people are doing, so, we're very comfortable with that, so that was, that was great, you mentioned you know that, you see that, I think we were both, both repared on that. With the football, junior high football, we have over 20 kids, we have a nice coaching staff that are working really hard, we actually put together a scrimmage, they went up to Marlette, that's the first time I guess they've done that in a while, and they went to Marlette and Carroll, had a K-Hay scrimmage, competed very well. The first game, they retired at halftime last week, and you know, but they've got some working things, some growing things, and pretty young, but our junior high program, again, Bertie and his staff, they're doing a great job. Along with our varsity football team, again, we're very young with there, and Mark and his staff is young, but they're doing some exciting football, we're collecting some great things with the homecoming game, should be very competitive. If you remember last year, we had the sign, that was a board member, it was great to take back, as you can sign, we have lunch, and they'll go over here Thursday, so we play K-PAC's football coaches, football captains, and cheerleading captains, and cheerleading coaches, we'll meet at ours, and they'll bring two, like we did last year, Channel 6, they tried to get pictures of stuff like that, so, it turned out really well, and we're going to win the game, gets to keep the sign, and the reason the sign came up was because coming into the league, we were kind of, you know, I'm sure Brad knows the great history of, that I think it was 35, 33, and one, or something like that, and competition between us and football, and they did win last year, so we're hoping to get our sign back, we can hang that up there, I want my sign back, so that's how Mark got hurt, he has to bring back that sign. Volleyball, we had a chance to get over there and see them, all the whole program is really doing some exciting things, our JV, they were an interim coach, he really had them doing some really nice things, they won their first league game in a couple years that I know, and then the Barson came back and won, beat Sandusky at Nice, our first league victory, so, they've got some tournaments behind them, they've competed well in the tournaments, and then our junior highs, if you get a chance to walk them, I think both our coaches are doing very well. I think last year, we had some resistance, playing both games at the same time, and now people seem to enjoy, kids are home by 7:00, you know, and I think with our first I was booing Chuck, we had this last week, our numbers are fantastic, mostly, very few high school kids down there, and very few junior high kids, and I actually had a couple high school kids that missed a couple days for illness, so, those are the things we're very excited about. Our cheerleading numbers are going up, they're doing a fantastic job, we started out with 10-11, we had 17 every night, so, we've got a lot of kids, we have over 100 kids competing right now, involved in sports, like, for fall season, I think that's fantastic. Our booster, we're at the meeting last week, want to thank them again, if you had a chance, the stereo and speakers out there are good paid for, sound phenomenal, and it's so much easier for us to use, I know they're making a big push, trying to get new members, and we'll do what we can to support that. Yes, the thing about the weight room, wanted to talk about that, the other thing Brad is, it was a thing with Reese about a potential grant, filled it out, sent it in, and I think with the 24, we get a phone call, it came out, and that was us last Monday, the team table, and they, they're actually very thorough, it came out, they were paying us $5, $3, thank you Brad, and we're in the month, we'll go to our hope, so, we didn't know that would be so tough, they like, yeah, good as any bad, they're welcoming, they give gender equal, as well as, good class friend, as well as that type of, for these, um, the thing about the locker room, all that is donated, you have the walls up, the board just came in, and we'll get that off, and we'll finish those off, but just given having them up right now, I'm excited, I think it's going to make things so much easier to learn, separating your team from before, we may have some pro basketball team, the boys side, and the rest are coming in, so after those doors, I'm, I think it's going to be a great thing. And then, the last thing, if anybody knows anybody, or can help, we've been trying to get some ideas, to try to fix that walkway, you know, we did have one, one, one family saying they donated some of the tile, we had a chance to get up to the baseball softball season, you know, like, we get pretty tired, we get empty, we'll walk back there, you know, park in the wind gap, because there's just no place we're going to go, so we're trying to, you know, get somebody to tile it for us, and we did, it made us some headwinds, but if anybody gives any ideas, you know anybody that can tile the floors, definitely encourage that, and try to get that done, I think that's, other than that, I think I have others that are kind of very excited, Halloween's going, numbers are up, it really looks good, and, of course, it's all really good job.
Just to piggyback, piggyback on what we're saying, too, often my husband and I took over the flag football program this year, and we have 75 kids that have been out, that are practicing, we need to get them over, we need those supplies that we need, we're still looking for some officials, maybe get some high school kids out, or if anybody wants to donate some time to officiate a flag football game on a Saturday morning. All right, my notes are in the report, I just wanted to quickly touch on the early literacy essential that we're covering this year. I had sprayed even, Kelly Clark didn't talk to you about re-logs last year, and this year, we're focusing on our writing instruction, and so I just wanted to talk about that briefly, it is early literacy essential number six, the details of that essential are in the presentation, if you care, we'll give them the detail, and I'll just kind of briefly cover the bullets that will be going over, so the first one, bullet number one, is daily time for children to write, so as, last year, we incorporated, it's the next one, we incorporated the reading workshop into our schedule, and we've been monitoring that implementation, and it's going so well that this year, we decided to really take off the writing workshop model, and that is incorporated in this daily time for writing, so the recommendation is 30 minutes, daily writing time in kindergarten, and at least one hour grades 1 through 5, which sounds like a lot, but it's throughout the subject areas, so they don't just have to write at writing time, which they will write at writing time, but really, the common course needs to stress writing across the curriculum, so this hour, 16 minutes, can be broken up into science, and social studies, and math, although, the teaching comes in in this writing workshop model, with independent practice time, and active engagement, and model writing, there's the portions that, writing workshop, I believe, focuses on explicit instruction, explicit phonics instruction, and I think, I think it kind of gets lost in translation, as we think about writing, as adult professionals, when we're talking about kindergartners and first graders, some of that is letter formation, writing letters that are matching the sounds that you're saying, so those are some of the things they cover, K1, there's a lot of teacher modeling, there's a lot of explicit instruction, spelling, and editing, so those are some things we're taking on this year as a staff. We spent a lot of time at the beginning of the school year, and I think I talked about this last time, developing a master schedule, a big frustration that teachers have with implementing something new this time, I mean, I think that's everywhere in the place, so how are we going to fit this in, so we spent a lot of time looking at our schedule, and the teachers did a really nice job of piecing their day together, and were able to fit in about 120 minutes every day of reading and writing instruction, so I think that's great. The second bullet is studying models of writing, so the read aloud really comes in here, we're teaching kids to read books as writers, so they're kind of looking at the writing craft, and how can I make my writing look more like them, we look at the various genres of writing, opinion writing, or we call it how-to writing, in the early grades, where they're the expert on something that they can write about, we spend a lot of time, and our focus issue will be, you know, personal narratives, just writing about a small moment in time, and then this just kind of talks about the mentor texts that we use, when we decided to go to the Mesa units, we bought the mentor texts that came with the units, so each teacher has a set of mentor texts to model for their students. One thing that our lab classroom research was up of, we later decided to focus on there on this year, was being very specific with our students about success, so what is the success criteria? Is something that I use with my staff, what will, what will you being successful at this look like for me, and now it's something that we're going to bring to our students, so what would you look like if you were successful being successful writer? So the first thing that we're going to talk about is, what does it look like when you're writing, what are we using this time doing? So Jennifer Evans from Reese is going to come in and give a writing time success lesson to our lab classroom teachers, who will then go out and do the lesson in other classrooms as well. An example of this is if we asked you all to draw a house, everybody would have a different house, right? Amanda might have a yellow house, she might have a blue house, there might be two windows, and you don't know how to be successful, with my expectation, drawing a house, unless we say, this house needs to have two windows, and these are blue, so just be very explicit with what it means to be successful at these things. Okay, bullet three, is using tools for writing, writing across the curriculum, which I've already mentioned, and being clear and specific about our goals and learning, so really having students peer edit, or looking at their writing, setting goals for themselves, here, maybe I wrote this piece of writing, and I don't have any capital letters, so my goal for myself would be capital letters, so that's something that they'll develop with the teachers, with the peers, and themselves, and then we're back to the explicit instruction and guided practice, so just like we have reading conferences, the teachers will be having writing conferences as well, to guide the students in the right direction to become writers. Writing process is kind of something that with our old writing program, went to the wayside, we were using WriteWell, so just really bringing back this, I'm not sure, we all saw it when we were students, so, just kind of come full circle, and just really giving the, set the purpose, researching, planning, drafting, reading, revising, editing, and then publishing, so. So the passage-based writing is something that the students are asked to do on the M-step, so this is something that our third, fourth, and fifth grade students will focus on in their classroom and in reading time, and we'll get into more of that later, so they're just writing and responding to tests. Through that, a lot of the assessment of the writing will be still through a new writing rubric through what's called writing pathways, but a lot of the assessing of students' writing actually comes from the teachers and students sitting down, having a conversation, and looking over a piece that they've worked together, so our teachers will have a lot of job embedded training on how to complete these, through your conference, or writer conferences. So like I mentioned, one of our successes, like, as teachers, we stay in front of a classroom, and we think we give them clear instructions, and then it's, and then this is what happens. Kids are coming from one way, they're coming from another way, and they're running into each other, so, we are really going to be working together to make sure the kids are on the right path, following all of our instructions, and that's why we decided to go, spend a lot of time with success criteria, along with the success criteria, come these checklists for each grade level, these are in our new, part of the new units of study, they come from a writing faculty unit, which was developed by Lucy Popkins, who's telling you everything about best practice in writing, but these are just really kid-friendly language about, am I doing the things that the writing needs to do, do I have a beginning that will depend? So what really matters is just time on jazz, writing, give you this example of the writing, and really keeping a growth mindset with our teachers, not about what we're doing wrong, but what's next, and same with our students, not about what's wrong in your writing, but how can we move forward in the next level of year, so how we're doing that is through our lab classroom structure, I know last year, like I mentioned, you guys had Brady and Kelly, coming back from all the re-logs, this year, with the, on release of the fourth and fifth grade literacy essentials, we've added a fifth grade lab classroom teacher, and that's Michelle Hatlitzer, the writing literacy essential is this, is pretty much the same 1 through 5, that's the beginning to start with, April Seeley is our literacy coach, who we were awarded through that national program, he's a teacher at our unit, and Jennifer Evans, she's a recent consultant, so, basically, how the structure works is all of us attend trainings five times a year, and then there's a lot of job embedded professional development, Jennifer Evans comes out, and she works with the lab classroom teachers, and then the lab classroom teachers either open up their classroom for other teachers to come watch, or this year, they're going to be spending a lot of time going into other classrooms and modeling also this year, we talked a lot that our students need to see work models to be successful at it, so we're going to follow that, and allow our teachers to be successful through seeing model classes in Excel, so, April and I will be available to coach in all the classrooms, and offer advice and feedback, and then, there will be my job, and some monitor the implementation of the writing, just like we did for reading through those monthly checklists and what. Do you have any questions? That's a lot in a very little bit of time, once you review it, if you have any more questions, you can let me know. And don't forget, official for five, that's what it is. Yes, we play from about 8 to 12, not 11. Next, we'll come officially in for the mission.
Your turn, that's all I got.
All right, a couple of things before I go over some data here, this, if you've got the board, she's, very similar to what's going on, we're going to do this, this week, in the upcoming action, that's developed by Mrs. Phillips, just kind of need to break down local on every day, and pick up to, I'm talking about, Friday, and I'm, so, check that out at your leisure, and as I said, this first week, today started, uh, spirit week at City Bridge Tuesday, pretty exciting, I thought, since, you know, I thought, we're very excited to see how things are, dress up, and we were talking a little bit, we felt like this was, for opening day, there's always a lot of spirit, you know, probably probably there's more spirit this year than we have to, you know, somehow, it's just because it's the first day or not, or maybe we can just enjoy the country versus city dress up, but it just seems there's nothing involved, so that was pretty exciting. Also, on the list here, behavior team training, so, Mr. Corbett and myself, and two of our teachers, as well as our social director, and, this is our school, and Susan DJ, two teachers from our school, and social work group, and we're all going to be using them out to train, to train, become trainers, for behavior teams there at the schools, for student help at the school, so, very exciting stuff, you also know, I'm going to train our staff on how to, you know, I talked with Mr. Melvin a little bit about it, yeah, so we're, we're going to create, and develop your plans, and we're going to be able to train our staff on people, just pretty exciting, so we'll be out tomorrow, and this is going to be super, super intense, that's principal slash everything tomorrow, for schools, so we'll be back in a bit. I wanted to go with that, and I also gave you two things, I kind of do have a, you know, a newsletter that you just created this year, too, I forgot to email last, I already read it, I'm starting to show you a favorite copy of it, you'll do that monthly, but just kind of a little quick snap of what's going on around here, so, read that at your leisure. And then, the data I wanted to show you is the other page you have, and it's like this, and it's pretty exciting stuff, it's some data that I shared with staff in our last, our meeting last Monday, and we kind of celebrated with the games, the wins, if you look at, you can look at the top and kind of see everything at the same time, it really concentrated that box down, the lower line, you know, it'll compare a group of students, so, like sixth grade this year and last year, it'll compare, actually, sixth graders and seventh graders, or, other group, eighth to nineteenth, apples to apples, basically, as you say here, so if you really look closely, you see some amazing things, and there are districts tall of those, you know, class sizes, you know, you know, seven of the kids in class, five, eight, 10, 12, 17, you know, kids, so what you're looking at there is, on the bottom there, it says six, seven, and so, BLA, that is 2018, sixth graders, and then people of ninth grade, seventh grade, same kids, and how, what percentage of students were proficient? What percentage of students, were, how many, the percentages we improved, proficiency, okay, so, between sixth and seventh grade, ELA M-step, we improved by 11.3% proficiency, and 11.3 more students proficient have fallen, sixth and seventh grade math, almost 5%, then you go up to seventh, eighth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade, ELA 14%, our ELA teachers, remember, our focus was ELA in math, our focus, I didn't mention last year, I really feel that our ELA in math, we did a hell of a job, and I recorded a heck of a job, with, with, not only have I mentioned, that's, how they spent their class, and their students going over, you know, the basics of math, and functions, and ELA, and what it means to reading, right, there's up and down the board there, with the exception of the eighth grade M-step, and that's, that's social studies, that's eighth grade M-step, social studies, that's comparing eighth grade to eighth grade, so it's different students, that's all we did, we don't take any ninth grade, or seventh grade, so we can't really compare that, you're really seeing some major gains in our math and ELA, very proud of that, and then also, if you look at, I know, again, it's comparing 11th grade to 11th grade, so you're not seeing those same students, but our social studies, we were very, our entire, not just the social studies teachers, but our entire staff was upset, or, we were upset, we had, we scored a 26, 28% proficient in 2018, in social studies, on the, on the M-step, you know, that, that's off the run, and if you look at St. Crete County, was at 43% this year, we rebounded to 45.5%, it was a huge celebration for us, our staff meeting, people were very excited, and again, look at the, look at the M-step 11th grade, you look at the sixth and seventh grade M-step BLA, 11%, the seventh, eighth grade M-step BLA 14%, that's huge gains, and they're beholden, also, teachers are hard, they're next. Just to stand on a little bit, what I also looked at, I didn't mark on your sheet, but if you compare our 2019 scores to St. Crete County, K-PAC, and Round City, you'll see that we compete, we, if we total it all up, on seven of the 10 subject areas, we outperform the county, on eight of 10, we outperform K-PAC, and on seven of 10, we outperform Round City, so those are some schools that are in our area, that are, we are often compared to, and it shows that I think we are making some great gains, and, you know, competing against them, or even showing better results than they are, you know, so I think it's very, very exciting stuff, and we're continuing to, to use that information to move forward, to show that we're staying tight, and hoping that we have more hands on time with students, and make sure half hour with them, plus there are a bunch of classes that are still going, we're hoping to see, they're going to have bigger gains over the years, but I wanted to point that out to you, because again, staff is really proud of it, I'm very proud of them, I don't think they expected to see that, you know, see those numbers, but when they signed off, they're off the, they're all the faculty turned in that, that was pretty tough, I hope this will be, I bring a cake next time to the staff, and, I didn't bring, I said, let's party, we're celebrating, we've got nothing to celebrate yet, I brought some Hershey pizzies, and I said, Hershey pizzies, but, next time we'll do a celebration. Yeah, but that's, that's not all I have, it's only just that I didn't really compliment them, about, sometimes, people can stop them, it's not really, it's a better hallways, you get crazy, it'll fall now, too fast, you know, it's muggy, it's long, it's not staying a little while, but, I can see a big guy decorating, pretty same time.
I'm me, hi. So, just a couple things that I brought on in the last month, that are coming up in the next few weeks here, Paul Bailey, from Stuart, what are the votes that are in firm, they will be out this Wednesday, to meet with Brad, Sandy, Laura, and I, to resume the audit report for this year, he's also, we hope to get a little more guidance from him, we had a meeting before, that went into a September light first. into a September light first. I also, I went to, I attended a quarterly St. Clair County Business Officers meeting this past week and we had also discussed with someone that hears their treatment of that GBA before and they're kind of in the same boat that we are right now, kind of holding, holding back on what we've been doing, looking for a little more guidance when our report comes, thinking that even till it comes to see how all districts are handling that GBA before and make sure that we're all on the same page and we're all providing the same treatment. News for this year, news will be going out within the next few weeks. I'm going to be sending out to the middle staff and faculty to give them the option of opting into a electronic form W2 so they can get a little bit quicker and we can save a little bit of paper on printing out paper W2, so that will be going out within the next week. All 2020 summer tax levy letters have been sent out and I have spoken with a few municipalities and they have received them and are aware that that will be done next year. Federal grants, the idea flow through and idea preschool budgets have both been submitted for the 1920 year. Those grant periods start on October 1st. GSRP transportation budget has been submitted and GSRP budget, the writer of GSRP funding that budget is due October 11th, have not committed one for that yet, holding off to see if any change in funding. Right now the projection is flat funding for that, so all numbers that we've been given are the same as 1819 of this year or at this point, but depending on when and if the state budgets approved and what funds are approved for that. So as soon as those amounts are updated, we'll be giving updated budgets and we'll fairly distribute, but for now, we're just going to assume the same as last year. The transportation expenditure reports, annual reports have been submitted. Special education actual cost annual report will be submitted by this Friday. I attended the MSPO business manager's academy session, the meeting number two. Again, that's been a really good tool to have and it's been really nice to be able to work with. There's about 30 to other people from the St. Clair, McComb and some of the counties, all in my same position, so it's really nice. Those sessions consist a lot of group work and David wherever bounce ideas off each other and talk about the scenarios that we're working through and things like that. So in addition to the experience that I'm getting on the job here, being able to meet with them is kind of opening my eyes and learning new things and kind of speeding up the process of my day to be where I want to be. So that's been really, really nice thing to be able to attend. And then again, attended quarterly St. Clair County Business Officer meeting and the other thing that we talked about there was just the annual GSRP updates for the reports.
Do you guys need more of this reporting guidelines?
So yeah, essentially what that is, is it's all of our, of our agency funds, those internal funds that we have, the athletic accounts and things like that, their, the treatment is going to be changing. Instead of a customer to treat them, we're going to have to start treating them more like our general fund account.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Actually, we'll see the audit results next quarter again.
Yes.
That's fine. He's obviously available that day. I sent it to him, he did not verify, so I think he's going to verify that. The tech director and maintenance transportation director, edit some notes in there if you just want to review them. Again, as always, mine is in there also, just a few things I would kind of cover. We've been watching the House and Senate and them go back and forth with a budget for the year. We are hoping to have something by the end of the week. At this time, it looks like they're agreeing on the two X formula. So that would give us an additional $240 per student. We did budget a 180 increase per student, so 240 would generate about another $45,000 to $50,000, so it would be very nice. As of last week, that's kind of where they said we'd be, so optimistic. Went to the NISA Fall Conference last week at the Jefferson, got to attend some outstanding conferences, heard some pretty motivating speakers. It's, some of the speakers they bring in, they talk about, you know, the things that we need to look at, technology, we wish that it could be presented to our legislators or to our parent groups because usually the people in the room realize that how important technology and what the trend is for jobs as students go through education, but it was still good to hear. Susan, I don't know if she mentioned, but I did want to point out that they, we went on the roof, Susan went on the roof for the child employment abuse council last week. A little shorter interview than it's typically been in the past, but we're still up there bragging about Memphis and the elementary students raised $260 to make the legislation special. Other than that, for specific, I'd like to get in there, one special teacher we saw tonight and the other one waiting on the approval of a background check and we're going to be approved too. So we'll fill all of our vacancies.
Anybody have any other questions on the reports?
A couple of questions. Mr. Goodman, yours, the responses on the student exit surveys, when are we effective to see those? I had them from, I don't know. I was going to get that board back there, let me know if I'm like. Or at the superintendent. Yeah, I am for it tonight.
Any other items for reports? Audience participation. We had two forms in here.
Jennifer Smith. Hi, my name is Jennifer Smith. My son Dylan, he is a junior in the high school and I just want to express some of the frustrations that I've had with the tech, Blue Water Middle College and dual enrollment process. In the spring, the students, when they're sophomores, they, you know, get to sign up for tech or Blue Art and find the information out about the programs. Unfortunately, I was running registration for our Memphis youth baseball and so I was unable to attend our open house. Asked for information to come home, Dylan informed me of the information that was presented. He signed up for tech. We did not find out until the end of the year that he did not make tech. Understandable, Memphis is a small community, we only allotted so many spots. And when I talked to Mrs. Gadkey, she had explained to me that he was on a waiting list. He was on the waiting list for all four programs that he had selected and that by July 31st, we would find out if he made it into a program or not. When I spoke with her on July 31st, he did not. So I said, okay, what are our next steps so that he can take advantage of everything that's available for him in his junior year? She said, Blue Water Middle College, you can contact them. He doesn't get in by July 31st. I contacted Blue Water Middle College on August 1st, found out it was too late for him to enroll. I was pretty upset in the process because I was under the impression that once he didn't get into tech, he could do Blue Water Middle College. To be told it's too late. I posted my frustrations on Facebook. I know it's not the appropriate place, but I'm actually thankful that I did. I can thank the board member who contacted Mr. Goodman to say, or Mr. Goodman to say, hey, we have a parent who's upset. What can we do to help this parent and this student? Mr. Goodman, again, I thank you for your phone call. He promised me that he would contact tech. He explained to me that Blue Water Middle College, Dylan could do second semester, which was not told to me by Mrs. Gadkey. He also told me dual enrollment offers a accelerated 12 week and eight week course. Again, options that were not presented to me. If I would have known that information, I could have been more proactive as a parent. I did not know. So we spoke, we figured out what they had. School started the next week. I told Dylan, we need to get in to see Mrs. Gadkey, get the process started, see what we need to do. Her response to Dylan was, classes start in October. That's pretty contradictory to my conversation with Mr. Goodman. So they sat, she gave him a list of all business classes. We've already had many discussions that Dylan is not college bound, he is career bound. He wants to go into the skilled trades. She hands him business classes. This has nothing to do with what he wants to do when he grows up. So he gives, she sends him home with paperwork and actually on that paperwork is a class for an associate's degree in welding and fabricating. One of the places that he was turned down for at tech was for welding. Why was that not given to me as soon as he was denied that tech spot? We could have been proactive, he could have started FC4 in the fall through the welding program, but he wasn't. It took a piece of paper that I was reading to see this information. My concern is how many other parents did not know that that was an option? How many other students were turned away from these positions at tech because we are a small school that there is that information out there? That's very concerning for me. And then for her to say that they don't start till October, another opportunity he would have missed out on. Part of my frustrations is I contact other districts, finding out what they offer their students. Why are we, what do we, what are we missing as a district that we can offer our students? Richmond is only seven miles away and I get it, they're a much larger district. A lot of programs that we will not be able to offer our students. However, they offer 17 programs. We offer three. Within their programs, they offer their college, McComb, they offer dual enrollment and they offer tech. Separate some tech in itself. They offer Cosmetology School, Auto Tech, which is actually partnership of New Haven High School, McComb Applied Tech Apprenticeship, McComb Construction Apprenticeship, South Western Power Lineman Training Center, Michigan Labor Training Center and a partnership program. And then also in-house, they offer and they partner with AIS for heavy machine operator and repairmen. They do culinary arts, business, business management tech, accounting, criminal justice, EMT, TV and radio broadcasting. A district that's seven miles away, their opportunities for our students who are leading school are flourishing. We are not. What do we, what we need to do is try to keep our students here because that's very appealing to a lot of people that are looking for skilled trades. When I said to Richmond that my son wants to do a skilled trade, she immediately emailed me every union contact that we have in Michigan that was never even spoke to with Mrs. Gadkey. She never offered a way for me to help my son when he graduates. I feel like we need to help our programs more to offer what we need to our students.
Thank you. I didn't mention this at the beginning, but I want to make sure people know that we are listening. We typically don't respond right away because we do want to gather more facts before we respond, but someone will contact you and reach out to you if there's further action taken. Okay?
Very good. I wanted to follow up on some of the action items from a couple of months ago, see where we stood on some of those changes and things like that. The ethics training, did everybody get that? I mean.
I'll, rather than getting into a Q and A, I'll ask Mr. Goodman to address those in the superintendent's section if that's all right.
Okay.
If you'd better listen than. Okay, I don't have those in front of me. If there's specific ones that you have, may I address?
Okay. Want me to email you?
Whichever easier, I can address it later today or.
Whatever.
I'll contact you tomorrow.
Let's see how late this goes.
Okay.
Any others? Trunum School Law Notes, item A. There were items in there about making sure we had certain policies in place. I checked those and I put those in July 22nd that they're referring to. There was some things in there about survivor's LAC, urban school year, safety drills. Some instances where IEP meetings qualified for FNLA. Then election dates for next year, March, May, August, November, so we have to file 12 weeks before that if you want to get anything on the ballots next year. And then they actually, we were talking about this last meeting, they actually had some confirmation in there on the opioid antagonist administration. It sounded like they've kind of changed some of the guidelines for that. Anybody else have anything else?
Yeah, just because I didn't have a chance to look it up. What is the yellow policy that covers up on the topic out of the Trunum notes?
Yeah, yeah, it's actually policy 2410 that we adopted in July. Anything else on the law notes? Right, item B, pronouncing this right, Brusha Adams, magistrate judge, Memphis alumni.
That's a 93, I believe.
Excellent example of Memphis students succeeding. Item C, Memphis junior runs cross country with relative in mind. Mr. O'Keefe talked about successor cross country programs having. So that was a nice article on Tyler Carlson. Memphis brother, Hill Scout rank. So it was two students from Memphis earning that rank.
I'm slightly related to you.
And then we've got the invitation card for Blue Water Area Robotics grand opening. So invite to see the, to reveal their, their open house. Nice, nice setup there from what I understand.
Mr. Ryan, is it an open house that we can have a date for or is that just for the school board?
Yeah, I'll just, I'll announce it. It's the Blue Water Area Practice Field Tuesday, October 8th. 2:00 PM to 7:00 PM. So reach out to them if you intend on coming.
Okay.
All right, we're on to item nine, old business. First up, item A, we have yellow policy 142.7 orientation revision adoption.
Make motion to adopt yellow policy 0142.7.
Motion by Mr. Cook, supported by Mrs. O'Connor. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Item B, we have yellow policy 5,000 through 5,095 students adoption.
I want a motion to get option of yellow policy 5,000 through 5,095 students adoption.
Good motion by Mrs. O'Connor, supported by Mrs. Phillips. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Item C, yellow policy 6,000 through 6,850 finances adoption.
I want a motion to approve the launch of yellow policy 6,000 through 6,850 finances
Motion by Mr. Parry, supported by Mrs. McHugh. Any discussion on these? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. At the new business, item A, daycare primary and secondary contracts for 1920, non-edited employees.
I want a motion. Non-edited day care contracts for primary and secondary children.
Motion by Mr. Parry, supported by Mrs. McAbson. Any discussion? I know it's the secondary, it's specific, like the days, the summer days, I think.
Wasn't it?
Cool. Yeah, we mentioned, we just made it clear in the contract. I think for the secondary, that would be none of us.
Yes, it is in secondary.
Right, we need it clarified in the A, the primary as well. Any further discussion?
Make the motion to amend the motion to include the snow days.
Motion by Mr. Parry, supported by Mrs. McAbson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry. Superintendent comments? Oh, I'm sorry, forgot what I added. Item B was the superintendent evaluation tool selection. So we had talked about last meeting, since we have several board members, if this was the right time. Since I left, get retrained to take, to change the superintendent evaluation tool. So took a look at the policies and compare them. So I looked through, and they both have 34 items that are touched on. The MAS B1, I felt was a little more concise than they had a pretty third cut point system of how we do the evaluation. Do you have any actions on the, where you got that? So I give you a few minutes to look these over. You can see they're not all in the exact same words, but they do cover a lot of the same things.
The rubric does break it down, I don't get it, so let the rubric out there. The terms used in the rubric for the MAS B tool is a little more not education friendly, so it is a little easier language, but the tool, the law, somewhere. I think the format of the MAS B tool is a little easier to navigate, just from looking from the outset. Counting the levels, but between the two tools, there's no way to really converge one or the other. People with MAS B, the MAS B tool are happy with it.
The school advanced training was 1750, right?
Correct, and the MAS B training is 850 for the board, the board plus mileage. It said plus expensive, she said 13, that's mileage. Both trainings would be three to three and a half hours. And both are available pretty much in time where you'd be looking to get it done. On a recommendation, we do it within the next month, then a month and a half, since the year end evaluation will do it in December.
And one on October 3rd, and also one tomorrow.
Well, they can come here for the evening. They will come and present it to us. We have to have a special meeting for it. They are available on Saturdays.
Not free to come here, that's fine.
The recommendation is that it's more for the people that should just come and do the whole part.
I know everybody has to do it, if we didn't switch three current numbers or the MAS A training would not have to happen.
The only hesitation I have in switching through, it's probably pretty late, late in the year. We have to have the evaluation in December for. So that's one reservation I have. The other one is, I know you use a lot of the school advanced tools for teachers.
For the administration, yeah. Teachers are advanced and something completely.
Okay. So I just want to make sure that, you know, there isn't any alignment issue there.
No, I, right now I'm satisfied with the MAS tool, school advanced tool for the administrators. Don't worry, it's, sit down and have a good conversation on it, I could get something we're kind of both familiar with, terminology wise. I don't see anything.
What's your recommendation? Do you have any concerns with us switching tools this late in the year that could be created on something?
I think if we do switch it, we can do it as soon as possible. That way we could still have two meetings on the new tool after training. So that way there is some time, if we find one category, you know, that we, it's not on the MAS at all, so it's not something. You feel like I'm hitting an effective manner that I had some time to look at.
I did give you a cross-reference on these, right?
I did spend time doing each one, though.
I'm thinking through, like, the policy involvement at the time, it was kind of 3D1. I'm wondering how many.
They're right down, probably just in a different spot.
Yeah, so again, you got all the same dialects, just ten.
Overall, it's gonna be very similar. Again, it's the wording that would be.
Like, 3D1 does MAS B policy involve per day?
The MAS A tool is written by school administrators. The MAS B tool is written by former board members here.
Does MAS B, does that come with the administration tool also?
I do not think.
I do go into, I have a good appendix on timelines to manage having different timelines. We're on the January, December timeline, and the July, April, March, April also. Consider changing that, make sure to find something that works on better. Does anybody have any further discussion questions on that?
The only thing I would say is that MAS B, that's where someone has been on for a few months. Now, MAS B is what I read, is what I get, when I get their information. I don't like the fact that we're looking at a group that's sending us all the information and reading it on a regular basis using their tool. Also, from a training perspective, it sounds like this one's going to be easier to get trained before December. So it helps me make my decision. I was looking at which one to do, I would lean toward this one.
Any further discussion? Right.
Good to be calibrated, unitary pressure for us. It's good to be calibrated on the same plane.
All right, I'll look for a motion then on adoption of the superintendent evaluation tool.
I make a motion to adopt the MAS B superintendent evaluation tool and schedule a board training at a time and date agreeable to Paul before the next board meeting.
Motion by Mr. Cook, supported by Mrs. O'Connor, to adopt the MAS B superintendent evaluation tool. And the training prior to our regular October meeting. Any further discussion?
When you reach out to the MAS B, is there a chance that they've already done a cross-reference? They must have people already set up guessing.
Couldn't give us the background too if we were looking for that.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry. All right, superintendent comments?
If we are looking for, since we own MAS B, if we want to do the, we could have had another training with us.
Here are the responses to the exit survey that we sent out. I apologize for the size being a little small.
Hey, I had mentioned in the notes on my report there that we reached out to roughly 30 families we reached out to. I had five that have not responded from the high school. I have not heard a number from the elementary that responded. But I'll be responding to a pretty wide range of reasons. The one thing that I've mentioned that I was a little surprised in is we put on there if they would like further contact from the superintendent and out of the 22, then yes. So I have made contact with four of those families. I've called seven of them and didn't get a response from them, so we have three more available. Oh, yeah, both sides of the street. So we had the secretary make phone calls. I don't know how many from the elementary, they did not get a word back. So yes, there was five, I mean, we've seen a good day. But again, good information in there. Yeah, and as you look through them, please feel free to reach out to me.
Are you going to follow up on those?
I am for everybody that checked, yes. Yeah, so I've reached out to seven, only contacted four. Three over the phone and one in person. Yes, hopefully get the other six. All operating funds, so it's something we will want to do in advance. It has not been voted down, it's a good thing for us. That one, if it does not pass, we do not make up the $1.6 million.